Appreciate your attendance and your interest in what we're covering here. And thanks for everybody's contributions. Chancellor, I'll turn it over to you.
Great, thank you. Well, the work session agenda, on the face of it, may look like it's rather brief, but I think you're going to enjoy a presentation that will commence here in just a couple of minutes. But we do have a couple of items that need to be covered. The first is a rather major item because it has to do with our funding for the coming year. And I would ask Jane if you would come forward and just walk us through this.
We are requesting approval of the allocation of the college and prison O N M appropriations. The college O N M is $296,714,074, and that reflects an increase of almost $16 million over the 15, 16 appropriation level. But as you all know, the employees of the community college system -- you couldn't hear me, I'm sorry. Can you hear me? Can you hear me now?
Yes, sure.
As you know, the legislature granted a 4 percent COLA for the employees of the college system. So much of that $16 million went for that increase, COLA and the increase in benefits. The colleges are going to be required to pay $800 per month for PHEP coverage for the employees. In the past year, several years, it's been $780 a month. In addition to that, TRS has also increased. Tier one went from 11.94 to 12.01, and tier two employees actually went down from 10.84 to 10.02, but there was still an increase. So we tried to allow additional funds to the colleges to cover those increases. As you have, you have a flow chart in your package that indicates the allocation of these funds and how that works. And there's several things that come into play. And the first piece, the colleges are allotted a portion based on their historical allocation. So it's 90 percent of the historical base, which would be their current year allocation. And the second piece of that is based on three-year average credit hour production, their percentage of that, each individual college percentage of the three-year, their three-year average, gives them another piece of that allocation. And the final piece is the balance, just divided by the 25 institutions. So that's just a fixed allocation per college. But in addition to that, this year, we added the layers. We took the budgeted salaries from each college, found the, we took those and applied the 4 percent COLA and the increases in PHEP and TRS, and applied an allocation for those as well. That was the budget, the budgeted salaries was the best information that we had available. So that's what we had to use for that piece. So you see, I think I also gave you a spreadsheet that breaks out these allocations, shows you the 4 percent COLA per college and the increased benefits. And those increased benefits would be the benefits associated with the COLA and the increased benefits of PHEP and TRS. On that same spreadsheet, you also see the legislative earmarks, and those are just informational pieces. Those are mandated by the legislature, and we have no control and you have no control over those. But those are for your information. And then we've tied that to their total allocation so that you have a clear picture of what each college receives from the legislative appropriation of the college O N M. And the prison O N M, the prison, are there any questions about that one before I move to the prison allocation? There are only five colleges that participate in the prison allocation. And it, there's a formula there as well, and there's certain earmarks that are required by the legislature in that appropriation as well. Over $5 million, $5.4 million is allocated to five different colleges. That's Calhoun, Gadsden, Ingram, Jefferson Davis, and Wallace Dothan. And they each receive a share of that. It was level, the appropriation was level funded this year. But there are also a couple, actually three other pieces of that. Ingram provides the educational piece of the Alabama therapeutic education facility in Columbiana. So they are awarded over $700,000 to provide that piece. Over $1 million, $1.68 million is awarded or goes to the Department of Corrections to actually house the prisoners at that site. And $2 million is mandated by the legislature for the Life Tech Center. Okay, help me out, Jimmy.
Thomasville.
Thomasville. $2 million is mandated for that center as well. So that takes care of the full appropriation. The allocation for prison ed is very similar to that for the college O N M. The three-year credit hour production, just of prison education, just of the prison population, provides for a good portion of that. They also receive, their first, their first piece is 80 percent of the prior year allocation, and then the credit hour production provides the second piece of that. And there are only two, two layers of that allocation. And you also, you have a flow chart that indicates that and a separate, you should have a separate page that shows how much, how that's done and which piece the amount awarded or allocated per formula. As the action item indicates, there are a number of earmarks during this process. I'm going back to the college O N M, I'm sorry. I should have covered this previously. The total amount awarded through this process doesn't cover the full appropriation. We also have, the chancellor withholds $1.9 million for awards throughout the years for special projects as indicated by the colleges. The remainder of it was allocated via the formula that we discussed. Other than the earmarks, $4.37, $7 million is actually earmarked by the legislature to certain colleges, and those are mandated. Those are the ones that I mentioned previously that we have no control over and you have no control over. We've listed those in the action item, and I also provided you with a copy of the act that indicates those earmarks in the code, in that particular, the Appropriation Act. These amounts are added to the college allocation, and they are provided to the colleges at 1/12 of that allocation per month, as with their college O N M and the prison ed. And as you will also see in the action item, ATN, Alabama Technology Network, and Marion Military Institute have their own appropriations. So those are mandated by the legislature. They have specific amounts in the act that dictates the amount those institutions receive. So again, those are, those are two items that we have no control over and you have no control over. But those are in the action item, just for your, for your information. Are there any questions? I know I talk rather fast.
Where were those numbers on, you said, example, Marion Military Institute?
There are line, well, in the action item, they're in the last paragraph of your action item, but they're also in the act that Adrian mailed to you.
Okay.
That's okay. If you looked at the act that was mailed out, those are in the last, in a rather large paragraph at the end of our appropriation. In the narrative, I'm sorry, the earmarks are in the narrative. Those two are separate line items, ATN and MMI are separate line items in the act. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Jane. The next item, I know we have visited this on several occasions, but I wanted to give you one more update. This has to do with the Bruton lease, the insurance matter that, as I said, we've discussed several times. So I'm going to ask David if he would give us, I guess, yet another update on where we are on that one.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon to you all. We've got some new information. Title 36, Chapter 1, Section 6.1 of the Alabama Code provides for insurance coverage for negligent, wrongful acts of state employees or agents, provides for insurance coverage through the Risk Management Division of the Department of Finance. This provision also provides that the provisions of this section shall not apply to any educational institutions or boards of this state. We've learned that the Department of Risk Management apparently does not interpret any board of this state, to mean all boards of this state. And that presently, the Board of Trustees has coverage, the individual members, up to the amount of $1 million per occurrence pending their review of the statute that brought the board into existence. So we don't have a final decision from the Division of Risk Management. But until that decision is made, the board does have insurance coverage for general liability.
That's an encouraging word.
I thought you might like to hear that. I like to hear that. But that's the update, and we are awaiting their final decision. It will provide general liability coverage to the board, not the college or the college employees, but to the board of $1 million per occurrence.
Any idea when we might have that update, or is that just to wait and see?
The last email we got was, it may take some time.
Okay.
But we will endeavor to push as best we can.
Okay. And this, obviously, will have some impact on this lease matter, and we'll, we'll act accordingly once we, once we hear a final judgment. So, great. Very good. Thank you, David.
Any questions?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I know I've mentioned to you in a previous board meeting, maybe even two months ago, that one of our colleges was, was recognized by the American Association of Community Colleges as having an exemplary program. They actually received one of three Awards of Excellence. They were a finalist for one of three Awards of Excellence at the national level, and it was in the, in the area of faculty innovation. This is a big deal. This is actually a huge deal. I was there and, and had the opportunity to witness the award ceremony. It was quite, it was quite impressive. I think the unique thing about this program that led to the award, it's a program that we're in the process of implementing statewide. It has been presented now to several, several groups, and although they'll be able to characterize it better than I can, I see it as almost a continuous improvement process as it applies to teaching and faculty teaching. And this is something, of course, teaching, this is something that the community college system takes very, very seriously. I think frankly, we probably do it better than any other educational entity in the state. But because we take it so seriously, we're constantly working at, at becoming better and better. So what I've done is I've asked the president at Wallace State Community College Dothan, Dr. Linda Young, for her to say a word or two about her, her two staff members and maybe formally introduce them, and then we'll let them make the presentation to you.
Sure. Come on in. Well, good afternoon, and as the chancellor says, we really cannot express adequately our excitement about the Faculty Innovation Award from the American Association of Community Colleges. As he also said, this is focused on instruction. It's an initiative called ICANN. Improvement, Constant, and Never-Ending is what ICANN stands for. And certainly, as you know, faculty are the key, they're the key component to a college. For a college to be vital, you have to have strong, committed faculty, committed to student success. And this initiative addresses that. And I'm pleased to work with the two who will present today. And I'd like to tell you a little bit about them. Dr. Ashley Wilkins is Dean of Institutional Services and Community Development. She has been at the college for 16 years, came to us as an English faculty member, then worked in advancement and several other programs, and then moved into Dean of Institutional Services and Community Development. And then Dean Tony Holland, our Dean of Instruction, has been at Wallace for 26 years. He taught chemistry and then was, and Division Chair of the Science Division. He put this initiative in place in that division and saw the results of the improvement. And when he became dean, he moved to implement it across the institution. It is his brainchild, I wish I could take a little bit of credit for this, but he has done a great job, along with support from the other deans, in putting this in place. So they're two former faculty members who certainly know about instruction, and it's an honor to work with professionals, who are committed every day to serving students and helping them succeed, and committed to the community college mission. So Dr. Ashley Wilkins and Dean Tony Holland.
Thank you. Good afternoon. We so appreciate the opportunity to be with you today. And Chancellor Heinrich, we would both like to thank you again for coming. The chancellor sat in on our presentation in Chicago, and it was very nice to have a friendly face, and we appreciate your being there that day, and we so appreciate the invitation to come and address the Board of Trustees today. So thank you again for having us. What we'd like to talk with you today about is how Wallace Dothan has effectively closed the student achievement gap by significantly improving student learning. And what we've done to do this is we focused in three specific areas, and you can see those listed there. First of all, providing training. We are providing focused professional development opportunities for our faculty members. And then, based on that training, we're giving them the support to take risks in the classroom, to do what they need to do to enhance student learning. And finally, and most importantly, we have added a very strong accountability piece because in the end, it's all about ensuring student success, and having that accountability piece for faculty members is so key.
Absolutely, Ashley. And you see the National Finance for Bellwether, that was also in the faculty innovation, and that was last year. So regardless of what you see as we're going through this, keep in mind, this fell into the top three in faculty innovation both last year and this year.
As Dr. Young mentioned, both Tony and I are former faculty members, and we both have a background in K-12 education as well. We started our careers there and then moved into the community college. So we have a sense, we think, a better sense of what comes to us on a daily basis into our community college classrooms. So we take a look at what walks through our doors, understanding that we have an obligation to educate those students that come through our doors. For those of you who may want a broader picture of our community college students, a few years ago, a couple of University of Kansas researchers conducted a study analyzing conversations in families. And they took a look at varying socioeconomic levels in families. Now, the important thing to remember is that the variable is the socioeconomic level. There is no evidence of abuse in the home, no evidence of neglect in the home. And what these researchers found is that children from families on welfare provided half as much conversation experiences as those children in working-class families. Having a little technical difficulty. As the research continued, what they started to do was take a look at the conversation patterns and the amount of words spoken to children before kindergarten. And what they found was that children in homes of the educated, higher-income levels spoke 30 million more words in that home before kindergarten. That's an incredible number. And also, children in homes from working class to the welfare homes had a 12 million word gap. So 30 million for the higher income, 12 million word gap for the working class to lower income. They also took a look at the number of encouraging versus discouraging words spoken in those same homes. What they found was amazing. In the higher-income homes, there were 560,000 more encouraging words spoken than discouraging words. Now, think about that for a moment. There were half a million more encouraging words. And in the next group, they found that there were over 125,000 more discouraging than encouraging words. That's a two-to-one difference. You're dealing with two-to-one more discouraging words in the welfare homes, and then you're dealing with a different ratio when you look from those working class to the upper class. And Tony has an excellent story. As I mentioned, we have the K-12 background that really drives this point home when you're thinking about the students that are coming to us.
And although we had 100 students over the years, this particular one was a basketball player back in ninth grade, and couldn't shoot a leg, probably didn't score a handful of points his whole year. But he had a heart for defense. He was Defensive Player of the Year that year, the next year, and the next two years. For four years, Defensive Player of the Year. And I didn't find out until he was a senior in high school that a parent nor a family member had been to any basketball game, and we have the audacity to question the motivation level of some of our students. Chronicle Higher Education pretty much lays it out. It says it's not all about the knowledge, it's ability to transfer that, to facilitate and inspire learning is what it's all about. And that's why it ended with teaching is finally going to matter. It sounds like something we're talking about today, or maybe last week, or last year. This was actually 75 years ago. This has been going on for decades. Been a lot of talking. And as you can see from the natural accolades, not a lot put into action in this area.
When you talk about 75 years ago, fast forward to 1983, when the report, A Nation at Risk, was produced, and it really highlighted for educators in the United States our need to focus on student learning. And what it showed to us then was that we were slipping. We were losing our place across the world as the leading educator of students. We'll now take a look at a few years ago when the Reclaiming the American Dream report was released, and it reiterated all those things that we had been hearing, starting 75 years ago through to A Nation at Risk and currently. I don't know if you're aware of this, but the United States is now 17th in the world ranking in education. We've gone from number one to number 17. We've got to do something about that. While the Reclaiming the American Dream, which by the way, is required reading at Wallace Dothan for every faculty and staff member, really took a look at that, and it showed us things that we should focus on to enhance student learning. We talked about redesigning educational experiences, but Reclaiming the American Dream said, no, you don't just redesign, you have to do a dramatic redesign. You don't just need professional development focused on student success. Notice it must be relentlessly focused on student success. We don't need to tweak our instructional strategies, we need to transform our instructional strategies. We need to realize that our student attainment gaps are low, not just low, but unacceptably low. And to remain open access for our students and to enhance that student success, not a few things must change, but virtually everything must change. And we must courageously end ineffective teaching practices. And Tony has one of the best examples of this that I think I've heard.
That's one of my favorites, is it courageously end, because it really doesn't require a skill to implement a new strategy in the classroom. What it does require is the courage to step out of a comfort zone, try something new, and then adjust that. But the old paradigm, if we're looking at it in relation to swimming, it would be like we took 30 students to the swimming pool that had never learned to swim in their life. Some of them had never even been in the water before. And we pushed them all in the water, and then we sit there from a side of the lines and we holler, well, you're not trying hard enough, you're not motivated enough. You didn't do that PowerPoint we gave last night, did you? You didn't do the homework last night. And lo and behold, 15 of them actually swam to the side of the pool and exited. And historically, we'd hang our hat on those good things. We'd say, everyone must have done a great job of teaching, I've got 15 students, learn how to swim, that have never swam before in their life. And we never once looked back at the bottom of the pool and think, well, something we could have done better. Could we have changed our teaching strategy a little bit, maybe got a few more to learn how to swim? And of course, it's a rhetorical question, the answer is, of course, we could. Maybe it would require getting in the water with them, maybe getting them over the initial shock of being in an environment that they were totally unused to. But unfortunately, we're not dealing with students who physically can't swim, and nor we did with students who mentally can't learn either. They come with their challenges in, to the classroom, but they, we're not in a position where they mentally can't learn. So that's why we say if we continue with these ineffective strategies, forcing those students to kind of compensate for those strategies, that has to be one of the most destructive and discriminatory practices going on in this country today, because it hinders up mobility from those that need it the most. Terry O'Banion said it best, he got a letter of, letter of support from Terry O'Banion, where he urges American Association of Community Colleges to share this nationwide. And he states, to achieve even a bit of success in the completion, generally, we had to have leaders willing to disturb the universe because he understood the challenges. Now, quite frankly, you're probably into the sentence after leaders, just say what he leaders. Leaders are always willing to do whatever it takes. Kind of reminds me, we're raising three grandkids, we got them about five years ago. When we got them, the girls were twins, they were 11, and having a terrible time with homework. They didn't need to overdo homework. And I just happened to be in the living room one time watching that, the old actresses movie, I'm talking about the 1971, that was some scary stuff, man. And I was watching, it, it, the Lord works in a serious way. It happened to be when an old girl was tied to the bedpost, padded bedpost, her head spinning, hair all messed up. Well, one of the girls walked behind me, and she said, oh my goodness, what movie is this? And I turned around, I said, I said, I said, old girl wasn't doing her homework. And I didn't think anything else about it. My wife came in the room about 30 minutes later, she said, what'd you tell Lex? And I said, why, you mean? She said, she's better doing her homework. And I explained what I told her, she said, that's just downright cruel. I said, well, now, you can call the crew if you want. I called it a beck, if she's doing her homework, ain't she? It worked today, it may not work tomorrow, but it worked today. And that's what teaching is all about, trying whatever it takes to get the job done. So we asked our faculty straight up, if there was a guaranteed, and that's emphasized for a reason, to significantly improve not just student success and student learning, I'm talking about persistence, attendance, preparation for class, and then we're going to throw in that while at the same time raising standards, because we know that's going to be a question. If there was a guaranteed way to do this, would 100 percent of faculty be interested in pursuing? Now, we know the answer is, obviously, it has to be no, or all this would have already been implemented. That's the challenge for us. But I just want to give you a little glimpse into the data, because when we started this, it was simply on our top 10 enrollment courses. They have the highest enrollment, 100 percent of degree-seeking students, 90 percent of our general academic faculty teach in that area, so that was a prime place to start, along with our developmental. Of course, can't get them through developmental, will never make it to the top 10 courses. We knew if we could get them through that first year, we could probably get them on to completion. So just those top 10 courses and developmental courses, the year after this initiative started, when we entered this active, engaging learning environment, actually had a dozen strategies we implemented at one time, over 1,700 more successful students the year after the initiative than there would have been the year before the initiative. Now, that is a duplicated headcount. I'm sure those students take more than one course, they may have flunked more than one course. But the impact that that has on our students is seen in the data there.
1,700 is an impressive number, whether it's duplicated or unduplicated, as Tony mentioned a moment ago. Our mission at the community college is to facilitate and inspire student learning. 25 percent of our students don't return to us after the first semester, 25 percent. 50 percent of our students don't return to us after the first year. In community college, we don't have an enrollment problem, we have a retention problem. And if you step back, we don't have a retention problem, we have a student learning problem. Or maybe we have an inspiring students-to-learn problem. So with numbers like Tony mentioned, and the common sense approaches with attendance and those basic areas that we focus on, what could you imagine would be the number one problem faced by leaders when you attempt to implement a culture of standard, and standards and accountability in the general academic division? Probably an easy answer, right? Faculty resistance. And you would think, well, why would faculty resist this? And we would come up with several things that we're going to talk to you about in a few moments. But the important thing when you start a top-down initiative, at-scale initiative But the important thing when you start a top-down initiative, at-scale initiative, is support from the leadership. Now, Wallace Davenport is very fortunate to have Dr. Linda Young as our president. She's been a president in this system twenty-seven years, so we have the stability at Wallace Davenport necessary to implement an initiative and carry it through, and we're so appreciative of that. And again, the chancellor's attendance at our presentation in Chicago was further validation of this. When Tony brought this initiative to us, and to give you a little bit of information about Wallace Davenport, we typically have close to five-thousand credit students a semester and about three-thousand non-credit students a year. We have four deans who report directly to Dr. Young and no vice presidents at the institution. So our upper group is small. Tony came to us and he explained what he liked to do with the ICANN initiative, and we were totally committed, we were completely on board. And we took Dr. Young's lead when she looked at all of us, when we knew that we were going to be dealing with some resistance from faculty members. And she said, of those faculty members that would give us some difficulty or some pushback, she said, "Our job is not to comfort the afflicted, but to afflict the comfortable." So when you have a mandate like that, there's nothing you can accomplish with an initiative like this. Now, what we wanted to do is realize that this was going to be a little challenging. So we expected to go through what we sort of thought of in terms of JFK's comment, that progress or improvement requires change and change has its enemies. So we assumed that we were going to have faculty members that sort of went through the five stages of grief. Our goal was to get them from denial to acceptance as quickly as possible, because the sooner we can move through denial, anger, bargaining, and depression, then we could find our way to acceptance, which we have done, and we can make real progress.
And since we're always looking for that next level, actually, there would be another level past acceptance, that would be ownership. And ideally, of course, we'd all like to reach that, where each team has their ownership of the data and accountability. But what else is to have a, what we call a forcing function. It's like SAC's requirements when we're doing our quality enhancement program. We don't have to worry about faculty resistance because it's a requirement. So that's a forcing function. It forces people to come together, collaborate, innovate, but unfortunately, the QEPs are usually such a focused areas, they don't get expanded at scale. So what we had to do is challenge faculty to change the paradigm. It is much more about mindset and skillset here. And changing that paradigm, it changes the way we think. When I came to the community college years ago, first thing I thought was, "We've got adults in college students. They should know how to do this, 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 and this." No, we don't. We're teaching them how to be responsible adults. And college students are the big difference. Or some of the statements we hear faculty made, I told them what to do, it's not my fault, they didn't do it. There's two problems with that statement. One is telling is not teaching. We're talking about a level of teaching well beyond just telling. And then the word fault, we removed that from our vocabulary. We've got plenty of people to blame. We can go to society, we've got programs, K through twelve, parents, we go on and on and on. It's our responsibility to provide whatever they need to enter the workforce or further higher education. We have faculty say, "Well, it's not my job to teach them basic life skills, that's a parent's job." "Oh, really? Hundred-and-sixteen-thousand children in the state of Alabama don't live with either biological parent." We're not even talking about the number that live with them that may not be getting this skill training. So once again, it's regardless of that. If they need that for the workforce, then it's our job and responsibility to provide that. "Oh, we're just supposed to lower the standards or just give grades." And it's funny that one comes up, because the other option is improve what we do. So it's like, that's an easy choice. Or it's my course, I can do what I want. Well, no, actually, it's not. It's Wallace Community College's course, or it's the state's course, and we can do whatever we want within the parameters set. That's where we use our academic freedom, within those parameters. I could teach them if you just send me motivated students willing to learn. I thought, whatever you say. What you're really saying is, if you make my job a lot easier, I can meet the goal. But the real question is, who's going to determine if they're motivated? Is that going to be the instructor? How are they going to do that? The way the student looks, the way they sit, the way they talk? Could overwhelming family problems at home be misconstrued as a lack of motivation? Could overwhelming with the class be misconstrued as a lack of motivation? And maybe if we went home with some of these students, maybe that question would get answered for us. And then I'll ask them, "Well, I asked them any questions? Nobody replied. It's like we're off the hook." It reminds me of my college days, hour and fifteen minutes straight lecture, there's fifteen seconds left in class. "Okay, any questions today? Good, y'all go home and read chapter thirteen, we'll see you on Monday." And I know they went back to their office and thought, "Well, you know, I asked them any questions? Nobody said anything." Had a five-second window of opportunity to raise their hand in a class of four-hundred, nobody raised their hand? In reality, we've got the data in front of us, we've got the grade book. Why do they need to tell us they're having problems? I know who's having problems. And we know it weekly because we're given frequent, low-stakes assessments.
In addition to the paradigms that Tony just mentioned, one of the things that really surprised, I think both of us as former faculty members, was the questioning of, well, is this a breach of academic integrity? And this is a response we formulated pretty quickly to that. Well, isn't knowing a problem exists and not taking action to address it, isn't that the breach of academic integrity? What we are looking at is setting a standard and then failing to implement a system of training and accountability to effectively meet standards? We want to focus on improvement. We think that anything less than focusing on improvement, there's your breach of academic integrity. Now, as Dr. Young mentioned, I'm a former English instructor, so I'm the feelings and perception side, and Tony's the science guy, the data guy. So we think we're a pretty good balance to each other. But we understood very quickly that we needed to take a look and take a listen to what our students were saying about perceptions in the classroom. Research consistently shows that positive perceptions in the classroom enhance and increase learning for all learners, and over five times more for those learners from the least-prepared, low-income groups. How could we not address those perceptions in the classroom? Research also tells us that if students can make at least three personal connections at an institution, then their chances of successful completion increase exponentially. Imagine if they could make ten personal connections. Where could that success rate go? Now, Wallace Davenport is one of seven percent of colleges across the nation that give performance or course evaluations at the midpoint of a semester. Course evaluations, those are the opportunities for students to let us know how they view the course. What were their feelings about the course? What were their perceptions about the course? What suggestions and ideas could they give us? We decided that we needed with a forty-to-fifty-percent withdrawal rate at the time this initiative started, to capture those perceptions at the midpoint. That's why we moved our course evals from the end of the term to the middle, so we could catch those people who were leaving us. We needed to know, why are they leaving us? What could we have done to keep them engaged and to increase their chances for success? What we have looked at and what our challenge has been is to make common knowledge, common practice, and that's what this ICANN initiative has done.
If you ever talk with faculty a lot of times, you get those, have really low success rates, they'll tell you, "But I set high standards in my class." And we had to remind them, you could be the most ineffective teacher on the planet who set high standards, that's really not relevant to what we're talking about if we're focusing on results. So we've actually had some directors say, "Well, you know what? I got this faculty member, they're going to be retiring in four years. How about we just ignore them right now, let me focus on the rest of them?" I said, "Well, that's good to go. We committed to being a data-driven institution, to make our decisions based on data. So let's lay the data out and just see what it looks like." Average general academic faculty teach about three-hundred a year, over three-hundred students a year. So in this four-year period, that'd be about twelve-hundred students. If they maintain the divisional average success rate of seventy-five percent, they'd have about nine-hundred successful students. If we allow them to continue with their fifty-percent rate, and there's a unique thing about fifty percent, if you're right at fifty percent, that means your only effectiveness would be the above-average student in that class. You had zero effectiveness in terms of course completion with the below-average student in that class. So fifty is a key mark, although I will tell you, we had plenty of courses well below fifty, and that's the same around the state and nation. But if they kept that fifty, that'd be six-hundred successful students. So you see where we're going with this. Are we willing to sacrifice three-hundred students, realizing that when they draw or fail from one course, their chance of completion's cut in half? They fail or withdraw from the second course, cut in half again. So that's the importance. No, we're not willing to do that.
As Tony said, we're absolutely, we're not willing to do that. And higher education journals, professional journals back this up, when they talk about the sense of positive restlessness or a willingness to continually improve, all of you understand that we are governed by an accrediting agency, SAC COC, and this is something that our accrediting agencies expect, that drives our accreditation, that need and expectation to continually and constantly improve. This ICANN initiative started several years ago, I believe, eight, Tony, in the Science Department, where Tony was the Division Director. And they were noticing a decrease in student learning, student success. So they gathered themselves together one afternoon in a faculty meeting, and they started listing the things that they had problems with or were seeing with students. Attendance, writing skills, critical thinking abilities. And Tony wrote all this on the whiteboard and then looked at his faculty members and said, "Okay, what are we doing to address these issues?" No response. So he knew right then what the problem was. With the ICANN initiative, the only mandate for faculty members is that doing nothing is not an option. We have a constant improvement, growth mindset that encourages lifelong learning among our faculty members, just like we encourage lifelong learning in our students. We expect this from every faculty member.
Let's get right into the program. This ICANN was actually coined after, I don't know if you know, Tony Robbins, back in the late eighties, early nineties, he had something called KNA, and KNA was constant, never-ending improvement. We just didn't like the way that sounded. It sounded like it was asking a question, "Oh, can I? I don't know, can I?" So we just reversed it to make it a more emphatic statement. So it's for improvement, constant, never-ending. And when we say that, we mean in every single area related to student learning. If something's impeding student learning, our next question is, what are we doing about it? Let's come up with an action plan. You know, that's what we do. We're community college instructors. We take students from where they are and we take them where they need to be. It doesn't matter how underserved or how underprepared they are. That's what we do. Reminds me of Joe Frazier, Muhammad Ali just passed away. Their third bout, twelve-round bout, it was a decision, came out, Frazier had knots all over his head, his eyes swollen shut, and he probably should have already retired. But you know, a reporter ran up, couldn't get there fast enough. He said, "Joe, why don't you keep boxing?" Joe looked right at the camera and said, "'Cause I'm a boxer, that's what I do. We're community college instructors, this is what we do." And when we look at this initiative, you know, quite frankly, when you look at the data we're fixing to show you, this is not an initiative. This is a full-fledged assault on extraordinary opportunities. That's what Tom Peter, the business officer, our business author says about that. And that's really what this was. It was so simple, so basic, and so straightforward, when you're asking somebody to continuously improve in every area, there's no logical opposition. There may be plenty of emotional opposition, but there's no logical opposition. It's just stepping back and looking at the common sense approach. Reminds me, I was teaching my daughter how to count coins one time, and she was about four or five years old. I told my daughter, "Say, I got this, I'm an educator." I threw a dime nickel quarter penny on the table. I said, "Now, tell me what's different about these." She picks up the penny right off a bat. She says, "Different color, Dave." I said, "Well, good, that's a penny, we'll set that aside." And I know she picked up the dime a quarter neck. No, she looked at the front, she looked at the back, she looked at the side, she got about two inches off of them looking, and I'm wanting to prod her, but hey, I'm being a teacher, I'm going to let her go. She popped up, her eyes as big as saucers, she had the dime in her hand. She said, "I got it, Dave. This guy, he don't have a ponytail." I'm like, "What? I ain't never seen him been dealing with money my whole life, I didn't know that." And we had to talk about backing off from the problem sometime. We're getting so involved in what's going on, we need to back off and look at the common sense approach. Now, she's a mechanical engineer now, so I understood where the analytical mind was going with that. And we focused just on those developmental and top-ten courses we talked about. We didn't want the data to be so overwhelming, we'd get bogged down in what we're trying to do here. We knew we could not close any student achievement gaps unless we could close the instructional effectiveness gap, if that makes sense. It's a recipe for disaster to stick students who don't know how to effectively learn in a classroom with a teacher that doesn't know how to effectively facilitate learning. So that was a big portion of what we did. And now you're going to have to incorporate academic skills, study skills, and life skills into your content. Now, understand, that's not something that traditionally we do in higher education, but it's required today. Life skills, eighty percent of jobs lost due to life skills, ain't right, chancellor? So we know how important that is. Well, this is not something extra. In an active learning environment with maximum engagement, this stuff is natural. It's not natural in a passive, teacher-centered environment, and that's where the difference in strategy comes in. So we had to have quantitative measures for these. We just simply couldn't manage what we couldn't measure, so we had to put numbers on things, so we could get motivation from the improvements we're seeing. And faculty know, if I'm sitting there as a faculty member, I say, "We know what I've got a problem with attendance, I can't get students to show up for class." The next question I'm asking myself is, what am I doing about it? Now, what the dean doing about it, the president doing about it, the state doing about it, what am I, is my class, my content, my students, is taking ownership of what we're doing here? And the only wrong answer, just like Ashley mentioned, is doing nothing. And it's the only wrong answer. So we're going to jump right into the data. Because see, if you look at the big picture, a lot of times, I don't see a problem. The average wasn't too bad. It's like, well, we're not any worse than anybody else. But I'd hate to put that on the front of Wallace College, "We're no worse than anybody else." But when we spread out the data, we start to see where the problem is. We took those top-ten courses, about ninety faculty members teaching those courses, part-time and full-time. We separated into top-third, middle-third, bottom-third. And you can see the difference there. There was sixty-one percent more successful students in the top-third than the bottom-third. And sometimes percentages, people get caught up in percentage. Let's put this in terms of students. That meant in the top-third, there were over nine-hundred students a year that were successful that would not have been statistically had they taken one of the bottom-third. And I'm telling you, the top-third was already using the strategies we're talking about. The bottom-third was mostly in a passive environment, that is the least effective way for teaching. And we knew this, we took sixteen of our most energetic, engaging faculty we had on campus, we sat them at a table, just like did. And we went around and said, "Just want to hear your number-one-best strategy." And boy, they were hitting some good ones. I'm talking about engaging, dynamite strategy. We got around the table and then said, "I want you to picture yourself as one faculty member. We hand you all sixteen of these strategies you just heard, and we drop you in a division ten or fifteen years ago. Do you think you'd be readily accepted?" Oh, the answer was not only unanimous, it was emphatic. It was not no, but mm-no. And that's when we knew the problem. We've got the wrong status quo trying to run things. So we went to flip the status quo. We made a commitment that day that the folks sitting at that table were the new status quo. And that's why, when you look at this data, you see the bottom-third, just two years later, we started this in spring of twelve. Okay? So fall of eleventh is our baseline. Just two years later, the bottom-third is operating at the level the middle-third was. The middle-third is operating at the level of the top-third. The only reason the gap didn't close, the top-third absolutely caught on fire. I mean, they were just waiting for a reason to do more than they were already doing in terms of innovation and creativity. And it continued on from there. So the change in paradigm was getting folks to realize, we're not going to, we don't want to care what you're doing. You can show us all this stuff you're doing, but the question at the end is going to be how your students do it, how they're performing, focusing on results and not activity. And that's especially true for professional development. And that's especially true for professional development. I hear from so many colleges, "Oh, we do hours of professional development, we're just not seeing any increase in student success, because nothing's being developed. You're giving a lot of activities, but they're going back to the classroom and doing the exact same thing they were doing before, and unless they have the mindset of improvement." And that's why we approach our development from a leadership development. If we get good on the leadership development, the professional development will take care of itself, because that leadership mindset's always gonna be asking, "How can I improve? What can I do to make it better?" Every study we looked at concluded the teacher was the most important aspect of student learning. Even the president of LaGuardia College said the single most neglected aspect was the teaching of teachers. Now, I would agree, that's half of it, but once again, all the activities in the world are not gonna translate into increasing student success unless the mindset's there. So we probably add on accountability to that statement. And LaGuardia College is one of the largest community colleges in the nation, by the way.
As Tony talked about a moment ago, professional development is so important, but as long as that professional development is followed with an expectation that things are going to be implemented in the classroom, that are going to focus on and enhance student learning. If you recall what I mentioned a few moments ago with the reclaiming the American dream, and it talked about relentlessly focusing on professional development that is directed towards student success, enhancing student success. Take a look at the jump in professional development activities dedicated directly to student learning and success, from '10-'11 to '11-'12. Now, one of the greatest things we hear, one of the things we hear most often, is how much does something like this cost? This professional development is free. What Tony in instruction will do, typically weekly, because I'm still on the faculty email list and I get them, he will take an article, and he will read through the article, and he will highlight important portions, he will make notes on the things he thinks are important, he will pass it to his associate deans, who will pass it to the division directors, who pass it to the faculty. They have an opportunity to openly engage with each other on the ideas that have been addressed in these articles, free of charge. The only requirement that Tony puts on faculty members is that when they engage in conversations, because he has adjunct faculty members participating in this, their comments should be positive and constructive, because what they're looking at is best practices from across the nation, and implementing those to enhance student learning, positive and constructive.
So we've already mentioned doing nothing's not an option, what that really means is 100% participation. And we've got the question in Bell whether somebody raised their hand, said, "Would, tell us again how you got the 100% buy-in?" I said, "Oh, no, you misunderstood, we never said we had 100% buy-in, we said we had 100% participation, and the way you get that is you're required." But a lot of the buy-in was the front-end, you could look at the top-shelf faculty, oh, media buy-in. But when they implemented, when you implement 12 high-powered, high-impact strategies, you can't help but get increases in success. Once they started seeing the increase in success, then they were like, "Okay, now I'm getting buy-in, I realize this is working." So let's boil this thing down, what are the three basic, in an area of instruction, the three basic legs on the stool for ICANN, the first one's maximum engagement, if you're not engaging students, they're not learning. That's just, that's just it. We do that with frequent low-stakes assessment, usually daily, at least weekly. Maximum student-student interaction, student-faculty interaction, you're working on communication, you're working on teamwork, you're working on, all those life skills are just naturally incorporated into this. And relevant instruction, that's difficult to do sometimes, I've gotta make it relevant to the student, that's the difference. Why are we doing this? Why do we have to learn this? Can I connect it to your success in life? Can I connect it to your success tomorrow? That relevant is very important, and the most important to me is that supportive relationship, it just doesn't get any more important than that because of the data? The data shows you make a connection with three folks on campus, completion rates double. So making that connection is also important, and that's where we have the early intrusive intervention. We say early, we prefer first day, but at least by the end of the first week, you already know who the out-riddled students in the class are. Make a connection with them, make a set of meeting with them, and that's where we use the word intrusive. We're doing the frequent low-stakes, so we don't need to wait for them to ask a question, we intervene when needed. And we've mentioned before, professional activity's not worth a hill of beans unless we get the action from that. So what did we set for the parameters? We talked about the guidelines that we operate within, we call them our guardrails. We don't like faculty running off the cliff with a busload of students and sacrificing students because they hadn't figured the deal out yet, so we set very clear parameters. One of those was unit objectives. Now, this is what the stu-, this is what the student gets before we ever start lecture, that's exactly what you need to know for the test coming up in three weeks, upfront. We most got, we all went through school, we got study guides. Every faculty member said they gave a study guide, gave it within two or three days of the test. Knowingly or unknowingly, we were training students to not prepare for class, to wait to the last minute, I get the study guide, I go home and cram, shallow learning, and then we wonder why they didn't remember it until the next semester. So deep learning is the key here, those unit objectives were a key on that. Writing assignments, that was an easy fit, faculty go to that, the number-one problem on campus, writing. We're sitting at a table with division directors, "Okay, anybody do anything about writing?" They all look at the English director, "I don't know, what you doing?" I'm like, "No, no, no, what are we doing? It's our problem." So this was a quick one. We said, "Let's see how quick we can solve this, we got 60 seconds, let's come up, we gotta come up with some way to address this, because we don't wanna say we're doing nothing." I said, "I'll start us off, I vote on one a week, that'd be 15 a semester." Woo, I got the conversation started, they're like, "No, no, no, please, let's do one, let's do five," and we just focused on three. In 60 seconds, we checked that one off, moved to the next on the list. Across every course on campus, three writing assignments, don't care what you do, how you do it. Now, you can imagine how this went over in the math department, like a dead balloon. I was walking through the math department, I looked in class shortly after this, and every student was engaged, and that was rare for math at that time, they were awfully engaged in class. I was impressed. Teacher came out, "What's your student doing?", they look awfully engaged. He said, "They're doing that daggon", he didn't use the word daggon, "writing assignment", he said, "I don't know what this has to do with teaching math." I said, "Well, I don't know what it has to do with teaching math either, but I know it has everything to do with teaching students, and I think you'll find that out before long." He showed up at my office about three or four months later, and about choking on his words, he said, "I gotta apologize." He said, "I found out more about my students than one semester that I knew in 22 years of teaching." If that's not a testimony, and that's not even the initial intent of writing assignment, it's a side effect of them. Grading scale, when we looked at a course, we picked a history course out, three different grading scales, and by that I mean, you know, you have essays and class participation, all kinds of different things, but they had five major test grades on each of those, that was what they had in common, the rest of it, nothing in common. We said, "Let's just plug in the same exact test grade on all three for a student, and do you know the picture on which instructor you had? You could've made a B, a C, or a D in that course with the exact same historical knowledge." So we said, "Oh, I don't know what we need to do, but I know one thing, we need to come up with a standard grading scale for that course, for the Wallace College History Course." That was one of the, one of the strategies we used. We said maximum engagement, we had to put a number on it, no more than 15 minutes, 20 max. If you've been talking straight for that long, stop, do an engagement activity, we don't care what you do, just incorporate it into the course. And I'll tell you, one of the biggest strategies was those internet and hybrid courses. We felt like if we're truly gonna emulate what's going on in traditional classrooms, we have to have a lecture somewhere. A complete set of instructor-made lecture videos for every objective in that course provided 24/7. It was so successful, we carried it on to the top-10 enrollment courses. Now, keep in mind, over 10,000 students register in those top-10 courses a year, that's a lot of students. I'm at home, I've got zero support, I don't have anybody within a rock throat who even has a college degree at my home, where am I gonna get supplemental instruction? Where am I gonna get help? I'm gonna go to videos. Every objective has a video that goes with it. Not only that, you're an adjunct that comes on board, brand new. I tell you what, here's your objective, here's your course, and by the way, here's a complete set of videos for your students. Probably for you too, because you wanna get used to how to teach this thing, but you can see the value in those. You mentioned the science department, this actually started about eight years ago in science. And we're gonna look at the Biology 103, that was our second highest enrollment course on campus, next to English 101. This was one year after implementation, same initiative, same strategy, 73% increase in positive student perceptions in the classroom, 31% increase in those attending class, and a five-times increase in the number showing up prepared for class. You ask a faculty member, "What's the one thing they wish they had for the class?", "Students showing up prepared." Showing up will be a start, but showing up prepared will be even better. Looking at those statistics, it's not even a surprise that we had a 42% decrease in withdrawal rate and a 47% increase in success rate. That's over 300 students a year, just in one course for one year, that are now successful that statistically would not have been before due to the more effective active learning teaching strategies.
Over 300 more successful students, that's a pretty big number to wrap your arms around. And if you recall, we put in that accountability piece for our faculty members. And if you'll take a look at those course evaluations, and remember, this is how our students have the opportunity to tell us what they think about our courses, you can see from this chart the huge jump. Now, across the nation, there's a response rate on course evaluations, about 27% to 28%, that's typical, that's standard across the nation. We set a standard of 75%. We want our students' response rate to be 75%, and if instructors aren't getting that response rate, they need to identify how they're going to do it. The important thing to remember about this accountability piece and course evaluations, our faculty members are not evaluated on what students say about the classes, or about them. Our faculty members are evaluated on how they respond to the course evaluations, very important. That's your accountability piece, it's that opportunity faculty members have to really look at what students are saying, respond to what those students are saying, implement that in the classroom, and see a return in student success on that implementation. And we also wanted to focus on, if you don't mind, Tony, about the difference in good and excellence. One of the things that sometimes we hear our instructors say is, "Well, good's pretty good, right?" Well, yes, but we don't want to be known for being good. You have a vision statement in your packet that we left for you today, and in that vision statement, it talks about the fact that Wallace Community College wants to be known for instructional excellence, not just for being good. So that, again, supports that accountability piece.
And let's look at the development, because the title started off closing the student achievement gap. Yeah, we're seeing an increase in student success, but what did it do to the student achievement gap, that socioeconomic gap? We looked at low-income, high-income, we actually separated into minority and non-minority to see if there's any difference there. To explain this graph, the higher income, in this case minority, the higher income had a 38% greater chance of success in that course than the lower income. That gap was almost completely closed two years later. And then the same thing we saw with the non-minority, wasn't that much big of a difference, but over 100% of that. Actually, the lower income has actually exceeded the higher income success rate, insignificant amount, but it has exceeded it. So the blue is just to summarize, before the initiative, the higher income was operating at this level. Keep in mind, this is a gap around the country that is so persistent, which is why the country likes the initiative. And then two years later, the lower income is almost at that level. And I will tell you, this developmental studies division has the highest degree of positive perceptions in their classroom than any other division, as it very well should be with the kind of students they're dealing with. Math 100, we like to look at math, it's the most non-subjective course we have, you do it or you can't do it. And we like to separate it out by term, because every term's a little different, you know, our summer rates are always higher, it's just typical summer. But in every term, you see a continuous increase. Two years after this initiative, 56% increase in the success rate in Math 100. We jump over to our top-10 courses, we're gonna look at that same gap, now we're in college-level courses now, gap gets a little bigger. Higher-income minority, almost a 50% chance, greater chance of success than the lower income. And then we have the same gap on non-minority. And you see those gaps, how far they've dropped. To summarize that data, the higher income was operating about 71% before the initiative, the lower income is almost at that, is at least within the 5% difference there.
When you're starting an initiative like this, there are always unintended consequences. What you hope is that the unintended consequences are positive consequences. We found this to be completely true with this initiative, and Tony and I would just like to share with you some of the astonishing results we found. When we looked at our retention rate, a year after implementation of this initiative, 16% increase in retention rate, 16%. When we looked at our increase in enrollment, 5.3% increase in enrollment, designated Wallace State, and as the fastest-growing community college in the state of Alabama. And if that doesn't excite you, this really will excite you, as it did us. Our graduation rate with AA and AS degrees, the year from 2010 to 2011 to 1415, increased 67.2%. That's a wow factor.
Now, the faculty, anybody in education, that's what it's all about, it's about empowering lives to increase the quality of life, but let's be frank, we've gotta maintain some institutional viability here. So we were talking to faculty in the beginning, we wanted to show them power of 100% participation. We said, "We're gonna only look at the 60 full-time general academic faculty, just that group, just those 60." And we said, "If you could retain one more student per class that would not have been retained before," well, over just that one term, that's over 340 students, and if those 340 students were retained full-time for a year, that's $1.7 million in extra revenue. Now, you may say, "Well, half your students are part-time." That's exactly right, so we're still over a million if we can retain them for another year, and that's just for one term. So we start to see the power of 100% involvement, that's why boutique programs just don't work. They're not scaled up enough to see significant results, and if you don't see significant results, you don't build significant momentum, and that momentum is what carries.
And with results like this, as the chancellor mentioned earlier, implementing this program across the state, we just think it's going to do so much for our state, make us the tip of the spear and a leader in community colleges across the nation. And Tony and I'll be glad to take any questions that you have, or anything that you'd like to hear more about, we'll be glad to share what we know.
Very exciting. What about your, how long did it take to get 100% participation faculty?
Well, that's a good question, because when you saw the stages of grief, stages of change, our intent was, from the get-go, to get maximum improvement with a maximum number of students in a minimum amount of time. So the question's not, "Are we gonna go through these five stages we're gonna go through?" How can we shorten the learning curve? And we talked about QEP and SACs, you know, have to worry about that faculty resistance, so we knew if there was not an option, you're gonna get 100% participation, and the buy-in will come later as they realize the value of these strategies that they're using. So the key was having the support of Dr. Young and the rest of the dean, there wasn't anywhere for them to go.
When you talk about accountability, what accountability?
For data. You know, we don't talk this thing to death, we let the data do the talking part. The way we presented the faculty was, you know, Dr. Young's responsible for every bit of data that comes out of our college, forward pass rates, graduation rates, retention rates, got her name all over it. So why would we not take that same accountability and go down to the level that produced those numbers? Now, accountability's not a bad thing, it's just saying, it's your data, and if all you see is your data, you may think, "Hey, I'm good." We give you the divisional average, then we give you the college average, you're like, "Whoa, I got a lot of improvement I need to make." I need to start talking to some of my colleagues, find out what they're doing. It creates collaboration and innovation through that, what we call that forcing function. So the participation is easy, but it does take total support from the top down.
And when you have that buy-in among faculty members, there's an accountability within departments to enhance student success. If I'm the one sitting at a 40% success rate, and Tony's at an 80% success rate, then I need to be talking to Tony.
You know, I don't know if you ever read Jim Collins from Stanford wrote a book, he was great, and he said, if you wrote about new course deal, they work in groups and teams, and the teams, they get a minimal salary, but their bonus is based on their production. And what they found was, if they had a slacker, that team ran the slacker off. Because the, I mean, psychological effect is, everybody wants to succeed, the team wants to succeed. So you create the framework, if the team can succeed, everybody wins.
That's true. They say leaders aren't measured by what they preach, but what they tolerate. So not tolerating mediocrity is a good point. They say the biggest enemy of excellence is good, because you know, "Hey, I'm good."
Absolutely. How, I'm sorry, I'm asking on one floor.
Please, please go for it.
Is this scalable to assist?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Question not with a word, the question not, "Is it scalable?", the better question